Any sound?
Thank you.
Yep, we ready?
You betcha.
Can I call this meeting to order?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There any conflicts of interest on today's agenda?
No, sir.
My general standards.
Reading of the minutes.
February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Dave Mulbauer, Chair Presiding, Members Present, Schultz, Dozar, Mulbauer, Hayden and Rossberg. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Rossberg to approve the approval award of Project VRS seventy nine twenty seven, the bridge replacement project on County Road M fifty five of the East Bouyard River to AM Coron, Coron and Sun Incorporated in the amount of one million four hundred eighteen thousand thirteen dollars and ninety nine cents. Engineers estimate was one million four hundred fifty nine thousand eight hundred fifty three dollars. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossberg, seconded by Dozar to approve a lease agreement for thirty five thousand with inroads paving for the Sleswig Yard. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozar to approve the tax abatement for twenty two eighty highway fifty nine. Dennison, Kenneth and Patricia Brink, a new four by one hundred Steel Utility. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Hayden to approve the tax abatement for eleven eighty nine, two hundred thirtieth Street, Sleswig, Trenton, Sherry, Klauston, a new home. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Hayden to set time, date and location for the proposed property tax levying notice hearing for March twenty fifth of twenty twenty five, should be five, at ten AM in the Board of Supervisors Boardroom on the second floor of the courthouse. Motion passed unanimously. The Board had a discussion with the county IT, about the county IT department at ten thirty AM. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozark to open the closed session per Iowa code twenty one point five subsection one, subsection D, which allows for a closed session to discuss purchase or sale of real estate. Motion passed unanimously at eleven AM. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozark to close the closed session. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozark to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty five dash thirteen, um, to enter into a non-residential purchase agreement for the purchase of property known as the newly surveyed parcel that is subset of the parcel north of Highway one forty one, lying in the southwest quarter, in the southwest quarter, section twenty four, township eighty four, North Range forty one, West Fifth Prime Meridian. Um, approximately five acres in the amount of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Authorizes signature upon this non-residential purchase agreement and all other necessary documents to effectuate the purchase by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Voting I, Schultz, Dozar, Mulbauer, Hayden and Rossberg. Motion passed unanimously. At eleven fifty AM, the Board took a recess. Board reconvened at one PM for budget work sessions. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned to eighteen PM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted at the bill with the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM receiving the next meeting.
Chartered questions or discussion on the minutes?
Sound it good.
Hearing them answered, who gets read? I heard nothing from Steve or Justin. So move on to supervisory reports. Kyle.
Pretty quiet. Wait for me. This flag raising yesterday went very well, nice.
Really nice.
My short little ceremony, very well attended.
That's a really cool flag pole they have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We do have, uh, we enjoy the fact of purchasing these new flags, so. Cause there's too tall for. That's the only hiccup we have, but obviously the doors still need to show up then.
Very. I think it's a little tomorrow problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or tomorrow. Oh, okay.
I think everybody was disappointed that Kenny Davis, our oldest veteran, age ninety six, came down with the flu and he was looking so forward to it, but it's.
I know, I talked to him at Homestead. He's very, he was very excited.
Yeah. That was a great move and. Would have been a bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was, it was really well attended and it looked so nice in there. Everything just fits so nice and.
It was very nice.
Yeah. Was amazed how homie it already looks one day after she moved in. I mean, it's got all the shelves, everything's on it and everything's just, yeah, it's perfectly, so. Yeah, but I'm more excited about getting the tables and chairs down into, we need to get that floor cleaned so we can bring those tables and chairs down and get that conference room, kind of like a conference room. Then I get some new handles for the, uh, into the, what's the employee, uh, break room? Because we feel it needs to be locked from the inside so people can't go upstairs without, uh, then I need to get the chain ordered upstairs so it says no public access, so people, it's too separate. People aren't wandering around, so we're going to know that stuff. Cut along really nicely.
Uh, when were you supposed to meet with Chief Trillo?
Yes, I was gonna ask you about that. Are you, we're still good for that?
Yeah, I was so good with that, so.
We're in a, Chief Trillo reached out to both of us and I think he ran through the comp center with you and Tye.
I'm going with the mayor of Madison.
Mayor, so just kind of a walk through and.
Yep.
What I understand and.
Well, it's supposed to have a. Conservation board meeting tomorrow night to see what the weather.
I would plan on it.
Blaze, but so you're.
I'll be very interested to see how that all works, you know, cause it's just kind of a boring, when we, they talk about the CAD system and all of that. I think it's important to kind of see them back, how that all works and how it's supposed to work.
I think just good for us to see and a better understanding of it at the comp centers.
That way we don't have to take Terry along if we all go two at a time, so.
Get it all at once.
We're not gonna make you know, we're. We're not. Not gonna break the law by now having you attend with us if there's more than three, how's that?
Well, that's well, that's good.
Just head out right after the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. The work.
Craig.
Um. Yeah, yesterday was the flag raising. I'll just commend Kyle spoke a little bit there and did a great job. So commend him for that. And I thought they had a really good turnout today for not really being publicized. And the press was there, took some pictures, so that was nice. Uh, Ty and I did meet with Chief Trillo and, uh, walked through the comp center and it was. In the light, to be honest with you, um, I think you guys will enjoy your time with it. I commend, uh, the chief for reaching out and wanting to show everyone what the, what that CAD system is, how it all works, the people there, um, it, I'm glad that he did that. I really am, I really am. I, like I said, I commend him for reaching out, uh, to us and letting us know how it works. And it just made me think more about, um, um, the process that it goes through and it's, it's very, very interesting. You guys will, you guys will enjoy it.
I'm looking forward to it.
And it did have a, what, Hunger Canyons meeting last Friday in Atlantic? And that was Paul's, um, first one as the head. He's now the head, you know, Hunger Canyons? And so, of course, it was a very well-run meeting, uh, done right. We had some speakers there.
We have.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Holt.
Hello, hi. And I'm here to meet just on to say good morning Crawford County. Hope everybody's doing good there.
Morning, Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Um, we have debate in just a few minutes, but I wanted to call you guys. The one bill I wanted to give some feedback on, maybe you can email me or whatever is the bill regarding county attorney conflict of interest. Uh, that's gotten a lot of attention, some people for, some people are against it, so I would love to have any info on that, um, that I could get from you. As far as property tax, I expect to be able to provide you with a good bit of information here in the next few days. Uh, exactly where, but I think we're gonna begin to get the, uh, you know, the crux of the bill here pretty soon. So those would be the two things I would, uh, I would mention this morning.
Say, Steve, is there a Senate bill that concerns prop, about property tax?
There will be, the Senate and House will likely have, uh, the same version, so it'll likely be like companion bills. Uh, can't say that for certain, but since Senator Dawson and, uh, President Bobby Coffin have been working on those together, I would imagine it's gonna be companion bills, uh, that are identical.
Okay.
Has there been any discussion about the mailers? That go out, the private tax mailers?
I have not heard a word about that. Can you give me a little more, what, what, give me a little more background if you could, please?
Well, mailers, we send out our.
Required.
Required and it costs the state of Iowa about a million dollars to send these mailers out.
The counties, the smaller counties are having to foot the bill for sending them out. Do people get them? They're more confused than when they were before and they really have no value, I don't think, but it's a huge expense to small counties. Uh, and we really don't see the purpose for it and it'd be great if they just decided to pull that one back. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so I will, I will definitely bring that up to Bobby.
Yeah.
I think the intentions were well with it, but it just.
It doesn't do.
It didn't work.
It didn't work.
It, no, doesn't work, doesn't work.
Okay. All right. Anything on the bill related to, uh, the county attorneys? If anyone wants to share me any email or something, that would be great.
Steve, I will, cause I do, uh, there's, there's issues that do come up that I understand where the conflict comes from because, uh, but we'll talk about that. I'll, I'll get you, I'll get you some information, how I feel about that.
Yeah, so I just get feedback on that, cause I'm getting, you know, getting some people's support, some people oppose, so, you know, I've gotta get a lot of information on that, so I know which, you know, whether I'm gonna support that or not.
Awesome.
Cause Steve, I guess the way the bill is, is written is that currently if there is a disagreement between the Board of Supervisors and the county attorney, the bill just allows for the, um, Board of Supervisors to get a outside counsel? Or does it go to district court and the judge decides?
I think you, it enables you, without the bill in front of me, I believe it enables you to go to the outside counsel. And nothing against, you know, not suggesting anything in our area, but there have been instances of abuse, uh, or a lot of folks believed it was abuse by county attorneys. And so that's, that's, I think, the evidence of where this bill came from, uh, so.
Because is, is it the same bill that has, if there's a disagreement between the sheriff and the county attorney, that the sheriff can get outside counsel? I mean, the way, the way I read that bill is then the, and the county has to pay then the cost of that outside counsel. And we really don't have any say in that because the sheriff and the county attorney are disagreeing. So the sheriff goes and gets outside counsel and then that outside counsel charges the county.
Right. That's one of the concerns that's been raised to me, but just so you guys are aware, there are two counties. I don't know if you're familiar with a list called Brady Giglio. Are you familiar with Brady Giglio?
I'm not.
I'm not.
So Brady Giglio is a, uh, happens as a result of a couple of three court decisions. One was called Brady, one was called Giglio, which basically amounted to, if, if there's any, anything in a law enforcement officer's background or record that suggests a compromise of integrity, that has to be supplied to the defense. And hence the Brady Giglio lists came in to be. And so it is completely a county attorney's prerogative to determine who goes on a Brady Giglio list. The problem is that law enforcement officers, there's no deprocess. Uh, in many cases, officers didn't even know they were on Brady Giglio lists. Uh, it's just a nightmare created by these court decisions. There's at least two instances, two counties in the state that where the Brady Giglio list has been abused for political reasons. Uh, and so, and I, in fact, there was a court ruling a couple of days ago in which a, an Iowa court judge ordered the local county attorney to remove the sheriff from the Brady Giglio list. So part of this is stemming from that situation. And I'm not saying this is necessarily a good solution, but just so you guys know the background. Uh, it is a level of authority that the county attorneys have that when it is abused, it creates all kinds of problems and very difficult issues for officers who almost have no due process in, in the situation. So that, this is part, there are other bills too, moving related to Brady Giglio, but that's just some of the background to all of this. That's why I would welcome any inputs you have and we'll see where that goes moving forward.
Steve, I agree with Craig. I, I think it's tough when you, you have certain instances of disagreements between a sheriff and, uh, county attorney. And I remember hearing somewhat about that, um, but yet legislation that could possibly affect us all because of a couple of incidences and cost us money to hire that outside counsel without our involvement or vote to approve that is tough.
Yeah, I understand. That's, that's the calculation we're gonna have to like when we're considering this bill. So I appreciate hearing that, that's what I've heard from others as well.
Okay. And any other question or?
No, no, I'll.
Appreciate you, Steve, calling in.
All right, as soon as I move on to property tax issues and all of that, I'll let you know. I hope you guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Thanks for calling. Bye.
Thank you, have a great one.
All right, you want Craig?
Okay, uh.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's perfectly fine. I, I will say I did, um, Paul passed this out at our Hunger Canyons meeting. And I'm sure you guys, longtime board members have seen that before with the East Bouyard Watership project in two thousand, two thousand and ten.
I mean, I'm doing, but I've never seen that.
And, and I don't know if anybody's seen the maps, I'm just gonna pass that out and guess. And then there's some pretty cool information that states who the people were that participated, uh, the individual landowners. And what I, the other thing I wanted to say is that I remember a week ago, I think I talked to you guys about Wesco and them getting the letter from the Health and Human Services about their new building. And on June thirtieth, that would have to go from five people to either four people or less. And through, uh, my contact in the governor's office, who I forwarded that letter to and my disappointment, um, she got back to me and said that, uh, the letter was sent, uh, should not have been sent. And there will be a correction to that letter. A new letter will be sent to Wesco stating that is not the case. And, uh, so that's encouraging. Uh, Wesco was, of course, happy to hear that. I called them. And so if we don't have a letter, wheels of government move a little slow at times. So when you request a letter to be sent out, I said if, I, I was told to pay, don't get a letter within ten days. Get back to us and we'll make sure that it does get sent out.
Very good, very, very good.
Being your connections through Wesco, this question was posed to me last night. Friend of mine has a client of Wesco that's gonna get married to another client of Wesco and they're curious if they will be able to stay living in the same household after they're married? Or will they be able to live in the same house?
Are they currently?
I don't believe so. I don't know. I'll find out.
I can find out.
Once they're married, they'll be able to live in the same. Somebody I can ask.
I'll find out and get back to you.
Something new every day. Yeah.
Doesn't happen very often, but.
No. Very.
Those instances do occur, so.
I think, but there's, uh, they get just like a different housing deal for them after that or what?
I mean, Wesco itself does not have varied housing that I'm aware of. Yeah, so. I'll put the situation there. Okay. I'll let you know.
Okay.
I'll find out first. Thanks.
Anything on the Hunger Canyon front from New Orleans?
Well, uh, on new projects, uh, no. We did have, I mean, our speakers, we had a Homeland Security, uh, person there from the state of Iowa, uh, talking about levees. Currently, there's, there's, there's over nine hundred miles of levees in the state of Iowa. And, uh, they are driving over all nine hundred miles by twenty twenty seven. And they take a sonar, if you want to say, over it to get the, test the soil type and see if there's a problem. If it's, you know, sand or clay, or if there's metal objects that shouldn't be there that are there? Cause that was the issue of the new levy that burst two years ago in southern Iowa. When that happened is there was an old culvert that caused a problem. Yeah, because they didn't know that it was there. And, uh, now with this new sonar equipment that they have, that they're driving over all of the levees, they can identify if there's any of those issues in the ground. And, uh, so that was interesting. Um, a definition of a hundred year flood, when you hear that, it is seven inches of rain in a twenty-four hour time period constitutes a hundred year flood.
There we go.
Know that.
That's good to know. Put that on your list and things you learned today.
Right. That's it.
You bought a name on here, aren't you guys?
Yeah, there is. That's a neat.
Yeah, it'd be pretty young back there.
We got Dave Mulbauer, we got Minkel Hayden, we've got Brian Rass, you know? Just picking out employees. Yeah, good projects. Good jobs.
Well, Dean?
Well, um, I did pitch base with the gentleman that's been going around getting contracts signed over in the bail area on the, uh, Silver Creek, uh, project. And they are, uh, needing to have those agreements resummed because they're starting to expire. And they're wanting to kind of speed things up because they don't know what's coming down the pipe from, you know, uh, what's going on up in, uh, don't, uh, federal government these days. So they're getting extensions. Uh, they've had a delay on the approval. Uh, it's not grant, it's tax benefits, but they don't know if there's gonna be any changes. But they would like to come next week possibly and just kind of give us an update on what's going on. They've had some change in, uh, investors and things like that. And there's some misunderstanding that it's a Canadian group that's investing in it. So they just would like to kind of come and talk to us, so I'll get that on the agenda if they can, if that's all right. But, uh, it seems like a real good group of, uh, guys working on it, uh, real, real, real nice folks. So they're gonna give us an update on that. And then they did get the, uh, uh, mental health and disability regions. Uh, it's immediately effective that they're supposed to start their wind downs. Um, and the twenty-eight E agreements will have to be addressed, uh, those remain intact until they are legally dissolved. Um, as far as rural property goes, they're gonna have to start, regions must submit closeout plans to the state of Iowa HHS by April first of twenty twenty five, closeout plans, uh, most projects funds necessary to close. So they're really, they're starting to hammer on any, uh, uh, agency that has over a hundred thousand dollars left will have to be audited. Um, employees will remain, uh, county employees until otherwise notified. So kind of does give a little direction. The only reason I bring it up is they're addressing how it's going to wind down, how it's gonna close out and how it'll affect us. Um, I do have an advisory board meeting, uh, this month that should be a pretty good one. And then, uh, kind of start getting a feel for how that's gonna go. Uh, but, uh, their public health will be affected, uh, January twenty twenty six. They're gonna start working on that. So we're gonna see lots of changes. There'll be no more, uh, local public boards of health, is my understanding. So there won't be any people. There'll be, uh, there'll be advisory boards with a representative from each county, I guess. Uh, kind of getting through the weeds on all of that, so there'll be more changes coming down the pipe for us on those things, but, uh.
So who's kind of, we read on, or you, I've given you the information on that.
Uh, this, this comes from Dawn.
Dawn.
She's passed it on, it, uh, Kelly Garcia, director, is sending it to the regional operating guidance for, uh, uh, twenty twenty five. So I can pass it around, it's a long one. I gave you the short version.
Who is the new Canadian, is it any Liberty Energy and Order?
Um, let's see. Brookfield is the name that they brought up several different times, but I'm not sure if that was, uh, cause it was somebody out of Ontario. Uh, I had, I had to save paper, cause he called me when I wasn't in my office, so I had to write on my grocery list.
Was starting out on the southern part of Crawford County that never, has ever done anything.
I don't think it was that one.
I see if I could.
I was just wondering if it was the same one.
That guy's name was something.
This one was Libya.
Oh, Adam Little is the guy that's going around door to door. And Zach, uh, Mike is, uh, is, uh, gonna be coming around. I talked to both of them, so.
Are they honoring the same?
Yes.
Exact same, they're just.
And the, uh, uh, transmitters are a little bit larger, but they're, you know, and I, and he said they're gonna be getting hold of landowners. I said, our bigger concern are the people that, uh, are affected that aren't actually the landowners, but the flicker and all of that is going to affect other folk. So that's more of my interest to make sure that they haven't moved anything that's gonna affect people that don't get the notification if they're not a landowner. So we're gonna address those things so that we're aware of, uh, cause last time that was the problem. You know, the landowners knew, but the folks who's, uh, adjoining property was gonna get the, the brunt of the, uh, uh, flicker and the hazard of it, uh, blowing off and all that kind of.
So are these, this company that actually going to, if it gets off the ground, build the.
It's, it's still, uh, Scout Clean Energy. It's still that, that group of folks and it's, so, yep. But I just thought it'd be good if they came and you heard it right from then, uh, that changing the size of the transmitter. So, uh, as you can see, I had to write on my grocery list, so.
What I understand, the one about, the one that was gonna go into the southern part of Crawford County for Manning West, that company was. That company was. Going, trying to build the framework of the towers for that project, but then once they got it all in place. Sell it off to Mid-Americo or someone else.
Yeah, I think this, this, like, it was here, it was supposed to be like in the southwest corner of the town. Down in Bullier, all around Dunlap.
Remember that.
But that never transpired.
Yeah.
So.
And it's kind of somewhat of a route back then, but we never really heard again itself.
Yep.
I just, I, I'm just glad that they're starting to, uh, address the closeout and how it's gonna affect the counties and, uh, there's a plan. I guess that's good news, um.
Another, I, I just looked back, I think, there's somebody's opening a, you know, Broadway and Main Mall or. Uh, mental health. Who the heck did I see that?
Um. It's, uh, somebody.
Courtney, uh.
Yeah, where did we see that?
Tony Beam's daughter.
Yeah.
His daughter.
Gosh, where did I?
Is it Weber?
Where did I see, oh, I think it was on Facebook, it was on Facebook.
Yeah.
It was on Facebook.
I thought that was promising when I seen it, I thought.
Yes, 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 yes. Um. Uh, and Caitlin had gotten ahold of me, uh. Maybe it was a text or an email.
I thought, well, here we go, here's the start of what we've been talking about, probably the local.
Right.
Coming back to the local.
Right.
The needs are gonna be noticed locally. And we're gonna have people, private individuals, probably fill in that slot, the gap.
Where there is a.
And us as the board will probably see the need for that and probably start. Recognizing the need of, probably funding it, but eventually.
Well.
I help fund it, I'm, I'm guessing, well, I see a need in private, if I agreed to. Partially funded privately.
There's, there's gotta be, I don't know, four-year-old funds can.
I, I. I don't know, but.
But I just, it just doesn't make any sense to me, you know, with Crawford County having to go down to Manning, the people that are required to attend classes. And they're, they're your most vulnerable, they probably lost their license, probably have family members a little upset with them, you know. I, and I told you, you know, a while back, there was a Crawford County citizen down in Manning. Calling his parents saying he can't find where he's supposed to go, you know. And they called me, and I'm like, I have to go to the hos-, you know, you just, it, it just feels so disconnected when you can't, uh, go there.
I hear that Jackson Recovery was gonna move back into Dennison, is that right?
Did I hear that?
Did you hear that?
No.
There's potential to look back into that?
Uh, where, where I would go with that is I was hopeful that, uh, with our community, uh, area that we have, uh, down in our Crawford County. Service center, community Crawford County.
Community center.
Community center. CCC, um, or S, that there maybe would be a space that we could use for, uh, some meetings and things like that. Might be premature to talk about it, cause we're still getting it done, but I would be hopeful that we could work something out for our meetings, so people aren't having to. Find the rights to everything. So those are, that's all good news. That's it. It seemed like a busy week. Oh, everybody's getting their letters from Vanguard, and so I've had several calls that, uh. They cannot believe that their property has been assessed for, you know, two hundred thousand dollars more than they paid for it, or they think they could ever get for it. Get calls like, if I could get that for it and sell it today. So the good news is, is that that same letter tells you that you can call the assessor's office, make an appointment to meet with Vanguard, you have it to March sixth to call and set up an appointment. Bring your, uh, either recent appraisal or kind of what you can bill, you know, pay for that building and plead your case, basically that this is ridiculous, that, you know, a little. Their, you know, steel building assessment guy, what goes from being worth nineteen thousand to thirty-eight thousand, you just buy, you know. Not a whole lot, but still, you could sell it for that, eighty-five for it, you know, so. And then there used to be some more comments.
So letters you said have gone.
Out.
Not to everybody?
Due to the people that were affected by commercial reevaluations. So that was completed, and so the letter says that it comes from the property assessor, it's signed by Seth. And, uh.
Did Seth see the letter? Did Seth see the letter?
I'm sure he did, yeah, I'm sure he did.
Okay.
Yep, I'm sure he did.
But it's coming signed by him, but it's sent by Vanguard?
It's, it's one telling the taxpayer that, uh, if you. Don't agree with your new revaluation, that Vanguard will be here, I think it's March fifteenth through the seventeenth, but you had until the sixth of March to set up that appointment. And, uh, uh, so I've talked to some people that, you know, that called about it. They, if, if they can't get any resolve with Vanguard, then they can still go through the normal appeals process, so I thought it was a fair thing to do, to let, uh. The folks that are so concerned about it have an opportunity to talk to Vanguard directly. Plead their case and see if they can, you know, have a, you know. Hey, there we go, very nice, yeah.
Well, after you go, we'd have a dollar.
Perfect.
Do you want one?
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, there we go, that's, hey, I did that one here. Yep, I, I don't have a copy of it, I just turned.
Maddie, they do have a, she's on an appeal process just to Vanguard, but then you have a, another appeal process?
Yeah, so our standard appeal process, uh, still applies after the fact, so. Um, Vanguard is scheduled to come here for, uh, time slots for individuals who have concerns about their property value that change via Vanguard, so that would be. Oh, excuse me.
Had to run.
Well, I wanted to get this when it was.
Appreciate it, yeah, while we're still talking about.
So they change commercial, industrial, multi-residential and dual-class properties.
Oh, multi-residential, awesome.
And so they send out note, or our office sent out notices to individuals with their new assessment role early. So that they could get the information in time to set up a schedule, schedule a time with Vanguard, um. Ultimately, they're coming on March seventeenth and eighteenth. And our first day is completely full with twenty-minute time slots, so there's been a good amount of people calling in and. I'm sure there was some properties that I saw that I said, oh, those, yeah, they're not gonna like that. Um, it is sent out by Seth Weiss, because he was the assessor at the time. Um, and then on top of it, they also still have the appeal process that is in code, so. You have an informal review with the assessor from April second to twenty-fifth.
So is that you then now?
Yes, yep, and then, um, they have the opportunity for inclusion to our Board of Review, uh, between April second and April thirty, it's like a formal written petition. And so they still have that opportunity, if they don't like what we decide, if they don't like what Vanguard. Determines on their property, they can go to us as the office, and then if they don't like what our office does, they can go to the Board of Review. And if they don't like what the Board of Review does, they have the opportunity to appeal to Pab or District Court.
And I thought that was awesome, that they had a chance to, you know, I hadn't seen it, I'd got the phone call and the guy was bringing it to me and so.
So did you see any, I guess, when you talked about all the different, I guess, multi-residential, commercial, I can't even remember all of them.
Industrial.
Yeah.
Industrial.
And dual-class.
Did you, did you see a percent increase on the, that, on classes?
So I'm gonna be totally honest with you, Seth reviewed these values prior to leaving, so I did not get that information in our office. Uh, so I don't know the exact percentage, I know there was plenty of properties I saw that had two percent change, and there was plenty that I saw that dropped fifteen percent. But there was a handful in my portion of the county that I saw went up fifty to eighty-two.
So it wasn't a cross-the-board thing?
Uh, it, basically what we're trying to do is equalize the values of commercial properties, utilizing sales from within Crawford County. And sales from across the state of Iowa, so if there's no like sales within Crawford County, we have to expand. Vanguard in this instance has to expand their reach to find like sales of individual properties.
Does it take into account, you know, commercial building and vanilla versus commercial building and Dennison?
Yes, so there's a thing called obsolescence, and, um, there's multiple types of obsolescence that a property can have. And one of those things is an economic obsolescence, which is due to location. And so a lot of those properties have ten, twenty, depending on what the market determines to need.
Cause I, I mean, one, one thing that was serving on the Wesco board, Wesco was looking at purchasing two, two commercial properties in, in Dennison. At both on Highway thirty.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, one of them was built in nineteen eighty-four and is five thousand fifty.
Yep.
One was built nineteen forty-six and is four thousand square feet. The assessed value of the two, one was one thirty-six, six hundred, one was one thirty-six, four hundred. So almost identical assessment, one's a thousand feet bigger.
And.
And forty years newer.
Yeah.
And you're like. Oh, that's odd.
Huh, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, there could be situations like that.
Corrections are.
That's what we're hoping for, yes, uh. Basically, we're trying to get everybody equitably assessed according to what they have, and that's why it's a good idea to have a full in-depth. Analysis of these classes of properties, so that they can all be compared all at the same time and be compared to like properties. Um, when the office is doing our yearly appraisal, we have to think of the entire county as a whole, so which means we have to think of. Ag and residential properties as well as these classes, this just allows a more fine-tuned approach, some counties do do it in-house. Um, it'd be something that our office would have to look at closer to see where the money lies, um. Cause we'd have to have, if we wanted to do it in-house, I think that knowledge is good, but. We would have to have additional licenses, furniture for additional employees, payment for additional employees benefits, all of those things make a, take. Effect when you start to consider whether to do an in-house or an out-of-house reappraisal. Um, but yes, ultimately, you wanna look at each individual property with like properties and commercial has a lot more. Um, specification within its class, because, you know, there's only one bowling alley in Dennison. Dennison sales of bowling alleys, you're not gonna find other like properties, and so then that's kind of where the statewide comes into play.
Do they look at population then, I mean, they're certainly not gonna compare one in Charter Oak to one in, uh, Des Moines.
No, no, of course not, no, they.
I would say, of course.
That goes back to that, what'd you call it, opta?
Obsolescence.
Obsolescence.
Yeah, well, I just, yeah, well, Ty was saying, you know, his, I think, was like five hundred and some thousand in Charter Oak.
Some of you did see a pretty good increase.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and in China, I talked about it, it's the, the bank, the Bank Iowa Bank, which recently sold in Charter Oak, was assessed. I looked on the website, was assessed for three hundred and some thousands, sold recently for like. Somewhere between forty and forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand, yeah. And that's where.
Does that get, I mean, does, could Ty use that as a. When he would, if he was to go to Vanguard, say, the recent sale in Charter Oak.
I've had people say.
Or does that, or does that be, or does that verbal Vanguard say, well, you can't use that, because that is. One of them sales that is like, idle.
So that sale in particular, I know a little bit more information about, uh, they, that sale was, that property was listed for over nine months with no offers.
Right.
And so the individual.
But that shows the, the dynamics of Charter Oak, I mean, Ty could also use that as a self, a point on his argument.
Right.
That if he was to sell his building.
Yep.
And that particular property also had a, uh, no, non-compete disclosure, so that bank building. Was not able to be used as a bank again, so it really limited the market of individuals who would be interested in that building. And it is a different type of building with different components within that building, so it is something that Ty could absolutely bring to our Vanguard appraisal. Or if he doesn't see eye to eye with them, then he could bring it beyond that to me or the Board of Review.
Well, I guess that, that my point being, I mean, the Dennis office in Dennison could put a non-compete deal on there. And then so no other Dennis office could use it, which would bring about your down.
Right, right, well, that's one of the.
That's why I'm saying, that's why, that.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think it's a fair argument Ty could use.
Yeah, absolutely.
What, what people, you know, said to me when they called is, if I could get that for my building, I'd sell it today and build a new one, you know.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so you just kind of, but do they care?
What the assessment value, if you could sell it for.
Never sell a building in, you know, uh, these smaller communities for a half million dollars.
Yeah, absolutely. It just, our office cares because we have to look at the market.
Yeah.
And so the hard part with the smaller counties, which every assessment jurisdiction will acknowledge, is that. If there are not sales to show us that the value is there, we have to broaden our search.
Yeah.
And then it does become the taxpayer, or the property owner is the better term for it. The property owner's responsibility to come to us with that information, that is why we have our appeal process.
Which, why I brought it up is because I think it's a great, yeah, some people maybe got this and didn't read it, you know what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying, you, you gotta have a benchmark somewhere.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And if you have to reach out further than Crawford County, so be it, but ultimately, there is a process in place, multiple process in place to.
Yeah, looks like there's five options.
Well, I'd just be curious to see how many people, you know, actually come in.
Right now, I think we have about fifteen on our list.
That's not too many.
So, uh, we've betted a lot more phone calls than the fifteen, but.
Okay.
Um, it really isn't that many in the grand scheme of things.
I was gonna say, I was thinking more like fifty.
But it's just.
And there are still trickling in, but.
Yeah, well, I just brought it up because I, I, I've never had read it, you know, so.
Yeah, nope, I wanted you guys to have that copy once I heard that, I was listening for my on-time slot.
Especially here, Maddie, I, I do think it would be very beneficial to the conference board. And I talked to you a little bit about this, and actually I had a missed phone call, we were playing phone tag with Chris's assistant, she's the head of the assess, assessors association.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Of having, my thought was, it wouldn't have to be getting into the weeds on things, but at our next conference board meeting of maybe inviting her here to give us more education on. Maybe the process of appeals, or to be able to answer some of these questions, why are these values so different, or how can we work around this and. And just so we as a conference board have a better understanding of the assessor's position, job, how things all work out. And a lot of times we spend all the time on the budget, which is good.
Yep.
But we don't have any time of being able to ask those questions about that building and what is Vanguard actually doing for us and. Why is the building in Charter Oak assessed, you know, those things that we, so we can go back out to the public and explain it better.
And what it really boils down to is people and their taxes, you know, so.
Yeah, that, that is the main concern.
That's what it all comes back down to for all of our budgeting purposes and for everything, and so. When you have somebody who's struggling in their small business to kind of keep the doors open and they find out that their values are going up so high and their taxes are going up. How do we keep, you know, we're not making that much money anymore, we had a bad year, and so that's kind of the big conversation. Uh, that people are concerned that they're just gonna be taxed out of being able to keep their going open, so.
Maddie, I thought we talked about this with Dwayne at one time. According to Iowa code, I mean, if you have to be within a window. Of what the va- value it should be, and if a county falls below that, the state could come in and.
And equalize it across the board, so the goal of our.
Which is not what we want either.
No, yeah, the goal of our office is to make sure everybody is fairly and equit- equitably assessed, so if somebody owns a property that would sell on the market for fifty thousand dollars. They should be assessed around fifty thousand, if somebody owns a property that would sell for over, around five hundred thousand, they should be assessed for five hundred, not four fifty and a hundred to make up that taxing difference, we want to see everybody. Fairly assessed across the board, and then what happens is the state looks at our sales from the prior year and they determine, all right. Last year, you guys had a total assessment of a million dollars, totally random number, a million dollars. And your new sales indicate that you should have a new value on these properties overall as a class at one point two million dollars. So we have to make that adjustment up to that one point two million dollars within five percent. We get a little bit of a leeway within Iowa code, and then, um, if it turns out that we made a calculation error, or if we just simply said, now, we're not gonna do it. The state's gonna come in and instead of giving each individual property what they equitably deserve, they're going to across the board increase every property. In that classification to meet that one point two million dollars.
I don't know if I like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's why we're here.
Supporting the state code.
Yes, yeah, so that.
Right, it just seems, seems like this process really puts the onus on the taxpayer.
To appeal it.
Right, to, to, uh, to appeal it, that if, if, if you, just for instance, I guess a building in Charter Oak, and there hasn't been any commercial building sold in Charter Oak in. In ten years, so then you go outside of Charter Oak, try to get a relevant, you know, make it relevant. And then that taxpayer goes, now I need to bring in, information, I don't have that information either, because no commercial property's been sold in ten years. So I, I, I can't get that information to you to show you that my value of my property really isn't that, because you're going. Outside of Charter Oak to find a, a relevant, uh, value of my property. And it just seems like it, that, is that good enough for the taxpayer to say, hey, there's, there is no likable sales, so you, you can't do that. Can they, can they just say that, or do they have to try to bring evidence?
They do have to try and bring evidence.
And they don't have the evidence, if you don't have the evidence, cause you had to go outside.
Oh, I really got that, hell, uh.
You know.
Evidence is relevant outside of the county as well, because we are in a local area, so we could go to Carroll County, we could go to, uh, Shelby County, we could go. Other places within our area to determine like sales in small towns, there's plenty, there's Dedham and Carroll, there's Templeton, there's. All sorts of other small towns in the local area to find sales, plus we don't have to just utilize. Plus, we don't have to just utilize the one prior year. We can go back multiple years and then put a market adjustment based on what everything else has done in the county to adjust that prior year sale to a modern market value.
So when you say everything else, is that meaning that you, if it's not commercial, if residential has gone up by ten percent, then like?
Oh, we would look within class. We would look within the same class.
In other words, it's not easy.
No.
No, I know it's not.
So much education.
I just hate having the onus always on the taxpayer.
Yeah.
You know?
I just thought it was whether it can buy, but some people might not even know.
Good information.
Yeah.
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 I would agree. Maddie, I appreciate you coming up.
No problem. If you want any more information on this process, yeah, feel free to stop in and.
It'll be interesting.
Questions. We've got lots of documents to.
Would you be willing, I mean, where does the taxpayer go to find all this? Sales from five years ago in other counties, you guys?
Aye, so other counties, I would encourage them to contact their local assessor. But within our county, we currently have a free website premium subscription available for those who want to do research on their properties. So if you call our office, we'll get the login avail, login given to you and then you can go on to that and yeah, absolutely, I can.
Appreciate it.
And, yeah, yeah, a hundred percent I can do that.
That'll help.
And then uh, you can go in and do sales search by classification. So there'll be a residential, a commercial, um, and it'll help you pull those numbers together. And honestly, call our office. We're happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, and do our own research to help guide your, your progress.
I think that would help a lot of, a lot of the public if they knew they had tools in place.
Exactly.
I didn't think they had that.
Yeah, and I.
I agree, I agree.
I think it really will help.
I, I was wondering, Maddie, if I get here, if it's okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the Sidwell mapping and I guess these two gentlemen here would probably like to have that login as well because we use, we use that looking for values for purchasing right away. Uh, but the Sidwell GIS still is, there's some challenges there, uh, and, and I know, uh, just hoping that those could be kind of worked through. I'm not sure where we're at.
Yeah, I've been taking notes on, honestly, I'm not sure where Seth left it. I did not get that indication before he left. But I have been taking notes from individuals who have called in over the past week to uh, determine what needs to be updated on the website. We have our own personal preferences that we have as, that we see as well while we're working with it. But until they work that out, we have made the original GIS mapping available to anybody. It is available on the public website right now. I will admit that it's not the easiest to find, um, but that's something that I can absolutely describe to anybody who falls in.
Okay.
Um, and I can get it sent off to each of your individuals so that it can be utilized. Uh, we, I will be in contact with them. Right now we're in high gear mode to try and get value set to meet Iowa code. Um, we have a deadline of April first to have notices sent out for the rest of the classes. So we will be trying to clean that up and then I will be contacting Sidwell throughout that process.
Yeah, if you could, this would like, I know Ben is interested a lot and, and I, we, we use it about every day.
Yeah, all I do is it.
Seems like.
The motion now is just kind of slow.
And so, and that, that might be a good place to kind of, you know, get some input as you're talking. Let's sit well about some of the challenges that we're having and pass it on.
Yeah, thank you. I'm glad to know that.
Thanks, Maddie.
Thanks, Maddie.
Thank you guys.
This tune will pass.
Hey, we'll see you in a little bit when we get done.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
That's a soft tune.
All ready for tonight, tomorrow?
Uh, well, yeah. We'll see what it brings. So, let's see here, and that's uh up there, on this way.
What's your uh, gut feeling? What's it gonna bring?
Well, they're talking like three to six, uh, I think that's gonna be great. Uh, and uh.
Land is.
Yeah, I seen one European computer that Dennis in six point one.
Yeah, so, um, you know, these margin storms can be somewhat unpredictable.
Right.
I mean, they just truly are.
Well, I mean, when you talk about thunder, snow.
Yes, yeah.
That can hit a very small area and.
Yeah, I've seen them. Carroll's kind of like, you know, the, it's, you know, right on dead center and then it goes a little bit south and a little bit north of Carroll. And kind of goes diagonal, kind of north of east is what they're, right, they're showing right now, so the winds are gonna be the challenge, you know, when you get sixty-five mile an hour wind gusts, uh, that's gonna be a little tough to deal with.
Staining wind like after about eighteen hours.
What's that?
Eighteen hours of sixteen hours.
I was supposed to say start strong winds.
Bread or milk on the shelves.
It makes it stay home.
It, it is, yes, Ash Wednesday.
Yeah.
So, uh, anyhow, uh, I think our contractor must be interested moving forward on this bridge order available pretty quick because the contracts come back like right away. So we've got that down here a little bit later to approve the contract bonds and certificate of insurance, which we can't talk to the contractor till the contract's been signed, reviewed, approved by the DOT. So we, we don't know that, but just kind of the, the flavor of how things are unfolding and so.
So, so the process is we send the contract to the person who won the bid and then once they sign it, it goes to DOT and DOT has to approve it?
It, it's all, yes, once we sign it, once everybody signs it, then the DOT reviews all the documents and they give us the green light and say you're, you're good to go. And it's all done electronically. And it's actually a really pretty seamless process now. I mean, when we first started this Doc Express, Kyle kind of tested that. It was, it was a challenge. Now, I mean, they authorized the engineer to sign it and it just makes it a lot easier, but uh, but yeah, so that's what happens is that we awarded it last week. We notified the DOT that we're okay with the contract. They developed the contract, sent it electronically to the contractor, they electronically signed it, sent back the bonds, the certificate of insurance. And then we know, we, we let them know that we received it. We put it on the agenda, prove it. When I get done here today, I'll go down there and I'll acknowledge that you uh, uh, approved the contract bonds and certificate of insurance. I guess sent electronically to the DOT, um, so there's no papers changing hands. It's all done electronically and, and uh.
So do those, so within a couple of days, we could have. Those counties have to have then a licensed engineer sign those, so moving forward.
Yeah.
When you're not, if, when you're not here and we don't have a licensed engineer, that's when you're, we're gonna need to have you step in.
Well, for two months, two months, I can't. Probably the months of June and July now, you know, it depends on where Ben lives, you know, with his, with his license. Uh, I have already talked to, uh, and I think he's probably okay with this, but I've talked to the Audubon County engineer, Mitch Riddle, about if the scenario plays out where you need someone here for a cou- you know, for a couple of months and, and beyond that. You know, if you guys say, you know what, we're okay with this, I'm okay with that too. But I'm trying to get things put in place, the, the, the plan A and the plan B, uh, so that you, you are covered. And uh, Mitch is, he was down there last week. He, he's got a lot of experience. They operate in, in a lot of ways similar to the way we do. And he's just right down there in Audubon. He's nice, close and he, he totally, he'd be interested in doing that, so. Um, if it gets to that point, there needs to be an agreement between him, you know, and you guys to do that. You'd have to make sure it's okay with his board, so that's the plan though, because you will have to have someone in place during that period.
Right.
So.
What is kind of the timeline for Ben's test of bands?
I'm still, I'm regging it in the bar chair.
Okay.
Yep.
And uh, and if it doesn't go well, then I can get one more shot before Paul's gone.
Okay.
Well, fingers crossed, then we'll be on that. There you go.
Yeah.
Thanks, positive.
That's right. Okay, um, and then the uh, seal coat, that's uh, in the subgrade stabilizations in uh, March. Um, the uh, bridge crew still, you know, is whether things permit and other things that kind of fitting in the, the work on the, the veil bridge and as soon as the weather get, clears out and we're good to go, we're gonna get that and get it done. Um, and um, Verdine was in this morning by rolls. I don't know what time he gets in, second roll, but however you gotta get up, make some rolls and have it to shop at six thirty. Uh, yeah, he's, he's, he's doing well, so. Uh, but anyhow, uh, the item four is most approved contracts and these are for next year. And uh, so, um, the uh, Stratford material continues. I think that's a good uh, a good relationship with them to continue to uh, to purchase these larger sums. Um, you know, there, there is the issue of, you know, using the combine yield monitor for, yeah, uh, the belt scale. I mean, that's the way they're selling it is based on that contract and you know, there's but that's just one of the things we're gonna have to accept, I guess. I don't know what else to do, guys.
I know you had a lot of talk with different engineers about it and.
Yeah, so, but uh, other than that.
Was the price comparable to last year? Was it, was it eight dollars last year?
It's up, it's up just a little bit, yeah.
And it was eight ten this year?
Yeah, well, the one, the one's eight ten and the other one's eight fifty-six. I mean, we, it's, the, the whole thing works beautifully. Um, and they have the material there, we need it, uh, we get the trucks, they load it, uh, you know, and, and so it's worked out so much better than, than in the past. Uh, we still are buying some from Halas, we buy from Anthony, we're buying ten thousand ton or so up at uh, Wall Lake. And that's nice because when we go into Stratford, that whole pile, they want to move it out. Okay, they want to, you know, get twenty-five trucks and let's get this pile moved out of here. Now, they're okay if we leave it sit there, but we need to have a big loader with a belt, with a bucket scale to tell us how much we're hauling out. And so that's why we, we do it that way. But up at uh, Anthony and Wall Lake with Halas, they have a scale that's permanent there. So we can haul out of there anytime and keep track of what we're hauling out. So it's a nice place to go with our guys outside of the gravel haul operation. Keeps Brandon busy and we're gonna have more guys doing that. Um, you know, and so it, it gives us options, I guess, with this, so.
I have heard a lot, a lot of good feedback with the ten percent crush line sound added in.
I think that's a good idea.
Nice, nice complete product.
Yep, I, I agree, Dave, yeah. So we have those two, um, the one's uh, thirty thousand ton and that's the Sparks pit over by Dedham. And the other one's seventy thousand ton and that's the Kate's pit near Sex City.
I'm making a motion to approve the purchases.
Motion Kyle, second by Gene, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, yeah.
Aye, aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. And the next item is the uh, the semi tractor. And uh, you know, this is just again, kind of falling in line with us trying to keep the tractors current, starting to kind of build a fleet, if you will, of tractors and trailers to haul more gravel.
Yep, which we've discussed, we've discussed in our budget with this and this just gives you the.
It's in, right, it was in his budget.
Right.
It's in the twenty twenty-six budget.
It gives you the ability to go order it now so that it's.
Yep.
Yeah, ready for use when we need it.
And, and it looks like this, you know, talking to the dealer would be maybe a June build, delivery sometime in July, so it'd work out perfect.
I think that's a good move on our part, especially with, we know that transportation of air get us very important and it's just.
I'm going to approve purchase of Mac, uh, pinnacle semi tractor from Housby Mac truck sales for one fifty-seven, two sixty-five.
Motion by Craig?
I'll second.
Second by Gene, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Okay, and then the next item is the companion trailer that we.
I'll make a motion.
Purchase, motion by Gene.
I'll say.
Second by Kyle, any further discussion? Hearing, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Aye.
And then item seven is the contract bond certificate insurance for that. The bridge over at Vale on County Road M fifty-five, it's gonna be a nice bridge once sold.
Motion approved.
Motion by Kyle?
Second.
Second by Craig, any further discussion?
I want to share that the funding for this is that city bridge funding, so this doesn't come out of any of our pots of money. So, you know, a lot of times we'll haul in the rip rap and get it staged there. We didn't do that on this one because we got up to one point five million dollars and you know, that's just a one-time deal. So a lot of the seeding and the rip rap, we, we did things differently on here, here to, to take advantage of that, that funding, so.
So that's from the state or the?
This, this is uh, federal, federal city bridge funds that uh, are allocated to cities and since this bridge is in the city limits of Vale, it's on our roadway, we were eligible for those funds. And so you have to kind of wait and, you know.
So did you apply for it or did the city of Vale apply?
Well, we did through them.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they had to go through the city of Vale. They had to request the, the funding.
But you did the legwork for it.
We did everything to get it. I had it posted, so we rated good, got all that good stuff.
I was good, no, I'm glad you explained that. It's not, it's not.
So, so, yeah, you know, because I was.
Right.
But, yeah.
Right.
Truly did. But I, you know, was, uh, you know, when we started to develop this project, I mean, we always do our own seeding on these contract projects. We're always bringing our own rip rap on this and it was like, we don't want to do that here, you know? We need the money. So, so it worked out good. Anyhow, I just wanted to show that discussion.
Any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Okay, I did have two things that have just kind of come up recently. House file six fifty is an in a bill that was introduced by a, I think it was a representative Stitzman. But it basically is, is uh, changing the code so that counties uh, don't have to have a licensed engineer as an employee. They're allowing consultants and so um, to, to, to do it, uh, long-term, I think that's a bad idea. I really do. I mean, I think you want, I think you want a captain on your ship. I guess that's the best way I can explain it, you know, so.
Is it because of, did it stem from the shortage of?
I don't know if that's yet or, and well, and so, so here's, here's kind of a little bit of a backstory. So like, take for instance, Monona County, you know, they had that project over there by Harvey Teases that was ready to let, the engineer left and now they don't have an engineer and the DOT won't allow them to let any projects through the DOT. So like this bridge we just did at Vale, uh, the seal coat, the DOT is kind of, the, the office of local systems through the DOT, they kind of provide oversight to county engineering entities. And so, uh, the code specifically says that counties need to have an engineer, licensed engineer on staff. Uh, and so, you know, you'll get some counties that don't want to do that. They just don't, they just don't want to do it. They don't want to pay for an engineer. Uh, they just assume manage the operation and hire a consultant to do whatever they have to do. And uh, so there's kind of what holds it up and the DOT says, well, okay, that's fine, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna allow, be allowed to let any projects. Until you get a licensed engineer employed as a person, so, yeah. So, so that's kind of the crux of the legislation right now and uh, you know, hopefully if you're value and have an engine at time county engineer, hopefully most counties do. It's, and see that that's probably not a good direction to go. But the other side of it is, is counties are having a hard time finding engineers.
You know.
To try to operate, and so, um, just making aware of that.
Thank you.
That's gonna go to the full house for vote and if it passes out of the full house, you know, so this will be your opportunity to do with Steve Old, get his thoughts, share your thoughts. And then um, if it goes out of the house, then it goes to the senate, then the senate can take it up in committee. It's taken up in committee, it goes to the senate, that's kind of where the process is right now. So, uh, I am gonna be meeting Senator Shipley, you heard that on Friday. Uh, he uh, has set up a meeting with railroads. And, and they are a challenge and our project is probably one of the most complicated in the state at this point.
Nice word to use.
Yes, yes. And I've been very patient, had lots of long conversations with some of their staff. But, but I try to make a case for this project out here. Uh, we're in the process of trying to get what they call a waiver, because the, the railroad, uh, just in short, they don't want anything in the right way at all. They don't want any peers, anything in the right way. Currently, the bridge is very confi- you know, very confining, I mean, the way they were, the way they were built. Uh, but uh, I mean, it's a challenge out there. We got US Highway thirty right there and, and you know, we've already raised a couple of feet. And by doing what they want to do, we're gonna have to raise a thing six or seven feet and then have to raise Highway thirty eight feet in order to make some sort of a, you know, a decent approach to Highway thirty to get a structure to span their entire right away. As longer you go, the deeper your section, taller your section, higher your roadway goes up and it just. We've got a really good plan that was submitted a year ago in February. We still haven't gotten an answer from them. And I've got a folder that thick of correspondence, phone calls and everything, so.
You said the answer from?
The railroad.
From the railroad.
To allow us to build the bridge that we want. And the bridge, the, the bridge that we submitted in February would allow for four tracks and be. And the other requirements, but it doesn't put the peers completely outside the right, they're saying the right way is sacred ground, we need to stay out of it, period.
Except for a three million dollar project, uh, I made a billion.
Well, it's a project that you just don't do that, you just sit there and you just, you know, I don't know. That's where we're at.
Peers currently sitting there right away?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, the bridge that we're proposing to build, it would have, would facilitate four tracks.
Argue that we are grandfathered.
There's only two tracks there.
There's only two tracks there, and just two or three years ago, they took a three-track bridge out, put a two-track bridge in, a mile away from us. So.
Oh boy.
Now, if you're out in rural county somewhere and, you know, and you just gotta make the bridge a little bit longer and you span it, that's not a problem.
Right.
We're right next to US Highway thirty. Just.
So are there bridges that have recently been built over railroad tracks that are? That the peers are within their, their, their right of way, are they making an exception for this bridge?
No, they're, they're, they, so what, here's what's happened is that throughout. The Midwest, a lot of state, they've already kind of taken this position in a lot of states where they're requiring that. What, I, I understand what they're doing, the UP is saying, hey, we don't want anything in our right of way, and we're gonna take a stand and we're gonna, we're taking a stand now. If this project had been submitted a year and a half ago, it would have probably fallen right through. You know, but they're saying we're gonna be here for a long, long time, if we don't start pushing these things out of our right of way. We'll never get it there, so that's kind of where they're at, and that's what I've heard is kind of the backstory, is that Iowa's one that's lagging behind. In terms of getting that accomplished, but, uh. There's a lot of bridges across the UP railroad, so, I mean, it could be.
Who granted them the right of way? Who granted them the right of way?
Well, that's interesting, they, they were given a lot of stuff when they built that transcontinental railroad across this country. And so they always make the claim, we were here first. We'll do what we want. Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's essentially what happens, the railroad's granted, deeded lands. And ten miles either side of there. Uh, as that, as an incentive for them to push the railroad westward.
Interesting.
A little bit of history on that, so, uh, that is all I have, so.
Shane, you ready? Come on up. Have a seat.
So we are interested in leasing space. On a tower that you guys own outside of Dow City. That's the gist of it, and then this would give you, I don't know if you guys have an engineer or somebody like that, that.
We have Zach.
So this is basically the equipment specs, and there's some pictures that show the equipment and how we mount it and stuff like that, you know. Pretty basic stuff.
So what do you guys do?
Wireless internet.
Wireless internet, okay. And you guys are on towers close by here, or where's your closest tower that you're on now?
Yeah, so we either will build in the county, so we'll, uh, put up small monopoles or self-supports or we'll go on water tanks. Or we, we're partnered with new co-op and, um, CVA and stuff like that, so. We try to get on pre-existing structures to minimize our footprint as best we can, and when we can't, then we'll go ahead and. Build and pass all the requirements for that, so our closest one to here, I mean, we have one just outside of town here, so.
Okay. I think, that first definitely got sent us to our structural guys who want to approve it. I don't see it being a problem if it's free.
Right, well thankfully, this equipment compared to the old days. Our company spent a lot of money in research and development, I mean, these things now are only eight inches by eight inches. And weigh less than five pounds, the radio's bolt right into it, so I mean, you gotta imagine, you know, big dishes and now it's down to. This, so. With being able to pass gigabit speeds now from these, from this new equipment, so as fast as fiber but wirelessly. We're trying to service the rural community where there's a need for that.
Take much for, uh, electricity?
We would. So it's a, it does take two twenty, but it's like a single fifty amp breaker, but we would. You know, bring in our own power, do a sidewalk with the power company and these folks and, you know, put in a meter socket or buy power from them, if that's an option as well.
Then you guys just pay us a monthly amount?
Right.
And is that in here?
No, 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 nope, that's what we're, we're just approaching, saying, you know, your guys' thoughts, whether this is possible.
Okay.
If there's space available, you know, all the good engineering stuff that needs to be done.
That's kind of our tower, he's in charge of all of our towers, so I mean, is, does it have the space, I guess, to?
You said Dow City, right? Yeah, I might think that there's space available for something that, that's small.
I mean, it seems small, eight inches by eight inches, five pounds.
Well, they would like typically, if we go, so we're partnered with American Tower Company, which has thousands. Towers throughout the state and the country, but, um. Wherever you'll allow us, I mean, we typically like to get as close to two hundred feet as we can. You know, I think that one's two sixty, but apparently we'll stay away from your stuff and all of our stuff is licensed through the FCC. So you don't have to worry about interference like that, we do purchase a license through them.
Yeah, I don't see a problem.
Yeah.
I don't see.
Submit it to them.
When we built these towers.
That was one of the reasons.
With the hope of having people co-locate.
Right.
We, we look at what we're paying everybody else typically, so that's between three and four hundred dollars depending on the need of the area, the height of the tower, what we can get. A month, so.
A month, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll send this off to our engineer?
Yeah, and if you need anything, my card is on there, so I guess you can get that one. Uh, if they need anything as far as that goes, if you guys need us to pay for the, I think that's pretty standard, who would pay for the? Yeah, well, it's, uh, like an engineering, uh, like a load, basically, this is our equipment. It'll show that your tower is capable of handling that load.
Yeah.
And yeah, I think it's like twelve or eighteen hundred, something like that.
Standard, I mean, that's. Well, if you guys, oh, remember when we, the US Army, we had to have them do that load test. When they hung their equipment on there, but then we had to have them do all the stabilization. And it costed quite a bit of money, but they paid for that. The guard engineer wanted to determine that tower will handle it if we stabilize and do this and that, so. But now we're in like a hundred and ten, a hundred percent of that tower, so we can't hang anymore on this.
On that one.
Oh, yeah.
But, uh, but with, through our engineering study, that determined, determined that. So we gotta have them do it, I'm not worried about this little bit on this one.
Shane, or you be like.
But if we get enough of these little bits hanging on there, it eventually becomes a problem, so.
Will you be looking towards other towers within Crawford County that we have?
Oh, you guys got more than, yeah, absolutely, if somebody could share that information with me, we'd love to. Say like a KMS or the coordinates or something like that, yeah.
And we got. Western Vale, Charro, Manila. Five or six. How big an area does, you have like one at the Dow City, how big an area does that cover for you?
Eight miles.
Eight miles, okay. Easy enough?
Will this improve the. Accessibility to internet for everybody in Crawford County, or do they have to be on a certain plan, or I mean, how?
So we're just, yeah, we're providing access to the internet, so if they wanna switch to us based on our price, or, you know, we're. We have better availability, yeah, it's accessible to everybody.
And they have to do next link to access.
Correct, correct.
So currently, do you have access to the people in Dennison?
I could find that out, I, I don't know, I'm sure, I'm sure, I mean, anytime you have more than one company, it's a good thing, just so you don't have a monopoly on it, but yeah. I mean, and we, we, we're partnered with so many different things, like if people have hardships, it's great, you know, not everybody's fortunate. And makes a lot of money, so people can qualify for seventy percent off their bill, you know, stuff like that, so it's very affordable. And we're coming under a lot of our competitors, cause we, we are obligated to build in a lot of these areas, we did get grants from the state level.
State, right?
Yeah. The Connect America Fund, you know, because of COVID, they seen that there was a need for.
Where's next link based up?
Hudson Oaks, Texas, but we have offices all throughout Iowa, they've been in Iowa for probably seven years.
Great, very good.
And it just makes sense to them at that time because Iowa's flat, right, for the most part, you know, so Iowa, Nebraska. Yeah, well, I, I tell them that, I try to say, why, why do you have a problem, like, well, there's more hills than you think.
Yeah, there is.
You know, it's not like the mountain range or anything, but.
Little hilly.
Mm-hmm.
So it's sort of take action.
But everybody's hired locally out of a lot of small towns, so I've been with them since they opened up in Iowa, it's been great.
So the motion, it just needs to approve the proposal, is that what we need?
Well, I don't know what we wanna. Take, I wouldn't take action yet. I wanna hear back from Zach, I want you to find out what the structure on Tigger, be of it, and, and. You know, go from there and then.
Right.
Come back with a dollar amount of proposal.
Let's move it to another.
Let's keep moving that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and then I'll just. Have you guys drawn up contracts with other carriers, or is it something you want us to draw up and you guys can look at? Ours is pretty basic.
I mean, usually they draw it up and then we run it by our county.
Right. Okay. So I'll have that prepared for the next one, so then you guys can show it to them and all the good stuff.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Easy enough.
All right.
Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Sounds like a good thing.
Maybe even just ask him, he's been helping with some of the contracts.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Get back here a little bit.
Thanks for coming up, Zach. All right, tax abatement.
One of those multifamily deals. So you've looked all over, Maddie?
Maddie, are you here for the tax abatement?
Come on up, you can actually have a seat if you want to, be more comfortable. There you go. So you've looked this all over and it, uh, fits within our tax abatement program?
Uh, it will be worth more than a hundred thousand dollars, absolutely.
Yep.
Um, it is a triplex out on Yellow Smoke Road, so just outside of city limits, um, there is a. Preliminary picture, if you wanna see it from.
So does the triplex mean three, three separate, all connected?
Yes, yep, so there's, um, one on each end with a garage and then there's one in the middle without a garage.
Oh, without a garage.
Yep.
And he thinks that's gonna cost how much?
Four hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Nice location. Right, he's doing a five-year then?
A three-year.
Three-year?
Yep, that, our county one is three.
Any needs, all criteria?
Uh, it's similar to one that you guys looked at last week where, um, the. Construction and applications were after the beginning of build, but other than that, yeah, the criteria fits.
So he has broke ground. He has broke ground.
Yes, good, Gene wants to share that paper, then. Sorry. Um, then you can see what was there as of, I believe that was twelve ten. Of twenty-four.
Yep, encourage all building out in county, so I'd make a motion to approve that tax abatement.
I'll second.
Motion by Gene, second by Craig, any further discussion?
I think it's, I talked to Larry this morning, he plans on more of these.
He's got one going in the plus, I guess, he.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause our, our tax abatement doesn't. Care if it's one, two, or three, a triplex, like one.
Nope.
Flex, I guess, like you said. Uh, it doesn't matter.
No.
They're identical, they, they qualify the same.
Yeah, yep, then it's a new build and the abatement applies to the entire building.
But ideally, if they. The whole idea of the abatement is to encourage.
So, yeah, I think it's all right.
Yeah.
Larry Bill, morale, we know we have a housing need.
Encourage it.
It's great.
He's done, he's done a lot and they're, they're turning out nice too.
Yeah, he does good work.
Any, uh, further discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Done deal, all right.
You're welcome to keep it if you want to review it later, but.
Be good, you got a lot for adventure.
And Maddie's also here, talked to her a little bit on the phone, um, just to go over some numbers. Uh, zoning and, have I done anything with zoning yet, where that may fall?
Uh, so I gathered a little bit of information from the beginning of the year. Uh, I couldn't tell you how much time our interim zoning administrator spent on phone calls. Uh, but I was able to find that there were twelve emails, not including the chains that. Followed the initial emails, um, from the first of the year until now, and so all these numbers are from the first of the year until now. Um, there were six building permits, I will admit that this is a slower season for building permits because people haven't started building yet. Um, due to weather, uh, I would say that those take approximately twenty minutes apiece to process. Due to gathering the info from the property owner, uh, delivering the payment to the treasurer's office, getting it scanned into our system. Uh, new homes or, uh, more detailed properties do take longer because of the amount of. Information we need, such as requesting blueprints and, uh, just communication with the process. Um, as well as three tax abatements this year, which we have these meetings and we just have the, fill that, I counted that in the time period for the. Uh, building permit process to have them fill it out and explain the, the, what it is and how it works. Um, I've spent about an hour and a half since Friday. Uh, receiving phone calls and emails, I have one from the ATF sitting in my inbox now. Um, requesting information on different zoning. Uh, ordinances. Uh, the alcohol, tobacco firearm, so. Yep, and, um, so I have spent some time on this already. I can only imagine that there was more phone calls than what I was able to find, um, over these last two months. Uh, last year, we had approximately fifty building permits, so we are still sorting through some information and finding new ones as we go. Uh, so I estimate about fifty, I was able to find forty-three, forty-four this morning, but I could. Uh, gather the data on for you, um, but yeah, so there's information on that. Uh, whether it is myself who takes on zoning or another individual. I do have information on a couple of different courses that could be taken, uh, to help with the transition, there's one, a region. Uh, eight, uh, planning and zoning workshop, that one's on the eighteenth in Audubon. And then there's also some throughout the state of Iowa in Spirit Lake, Iowa City, Ford Dodge, U City, Dubuque. Um, but the, this one's put on, the other ones are put on by ISU Extension and Outreach, so there's plenty of. Um, opportunities for learning as well as the, um, on top of learning the information of our specific county. Um, and then there is a solar project in the works, it's approximately twenty-five to thirty acres maximum footprint. They've been in contact, um, for the information that I've been able to find, uh, looking at properties in Crawford County that may be a good fit for them. So there's a lot going on with zoning, uh, I know we've been, yeah, yeah, definitely. Um.
How do you feel about being able to take on the. Ability of doing zoning, doing it now?
Yep, I, I would say that it is an additional workload to the office, uh, because outside of just taking the building permits. Um, we also have to look into the zone, all zoning ordinance questions, whether something would be allowed or not allowed. I almost have to know the zoning book by the back of my hand to be able to be efficient at answering those questions, so it's going to take some time. Especially getting started up to learn the background, because our office, the staff typically only. Has handled accepting building permits, and then if there was any other zoning questions, it would get redirected to the interim or the administrator in the past. Uh.
If you took on zoning, would you use Tracy or Adrian as to help with zoning?
I think that would be the best option, because then we would have a office staff available at all times. Um, yep, and to be able to, whether it can, is simply accepting building permits and asking the information, or whether I. Have somebody else run the, um, the variance meetings or those sort of things. Um, I would like to see them compensated if I utilized them, I.
Exactly, Maddie, what I was thinking, is that, how, how do you compensate? Because I think from a long-term perspective, it makes sense that that office was doing it, but that office is gonna change with the people in it.
Yes.
Over time.
Yep.
So to have everyone, uh, like you say, trained and understanding zoning, so that it's an easy transition. For whoever is in charge, how would you, uh, propose making sure or. That everyone is compensated so that it is fair for everyone that's involved?
Oh, so. Oh, so um, for example, I noticed that the amount that was suggested. I don't know a lot of information on anything that happened prior to um, the vacancy in our office. But I, this is what I've been able to gather from research, so I uh, was also handed, or, yeah, I was handed a sheet that had the new proposed zoning budget for this year, and I noticed that it was bumped up to seventy-five hundred for wages. If push comes to shove, how I would view that would be saying, just as a not, please don't hold me to it, but as an idea, it would be like twelve fifty per, right now we have three three total individuals in the office. If it was myself who took the position, I would take what was being given in previous years um, for payment and then I would allocate the rest to my staff accordingly, whether it was equally or um, divided amongst taxes.
So it'll be a five thousand, twelve fifty.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
We had talked to Amy, you know, that there would be a way that, that we added to the che- checks as because they were thinking about divided up, every time you did one, you got paid for that particular service, so.
Okay.
You know, but those are just some options if you don't know.
So basically hourly compensation rather than, okay.
That was an option that we.
Yeah, that's certainly an idea we can.
If somebody feels like they're doing more than somebody else, you know.
Yep.
Can you keep track of that?
I think you could. I think you're good.
Yeah, it, tracking always takes time, but sometimes that time is worth every penny. So it all depends on what we're looking for as a county and what you're hoping to get in information wise.
Or, cause you're not there all the time for a vacation or out.
Yeah.
Somebody else has to step up and do it, uh, and you're, we're getting compensated. It just makes it better. I think that's the way to.
So then, Gene, would you say that if, so if I'm working in the assessor's office and now I'm working on the zoning question, not an assessor issue? So now I'm not paid by the assessor for this hour? For this hour, or am I paid by the assessor for this hour and then paid by the uh, zoning also for that hour?
That doesn't seem right.
Or, or, I, I don't want any conflict or, let's just say, Tracy said, I want to take on that zoning. You know, or vice versa. That's why I like the dollar amount. It's just you covered it.
If that's, if everybody's after with that, that would be the easiest simplest and uh, see how it goes for that first year and how it works.
Would you, the total budget is, we've got seventeen thousand, eight fifty-seven, there's some, there's some wages in there up to seventy-five. Some mileage and that should cover some of that training.
Yes, I, I believe it would, um, you know, though if I can manage the one coming up on March eighteenth, I would go to Audubon, so that shouldn't be, that'd probably be one of the closest. I know, I agree.
I know, just their travel is.
It'd be handy, yeah.
So you're gonna take zoning on for us?
I am happy to consider it. I, I seem to be pretty down to the point.
From the public's perspective, it's a natural fit, that if I go to the courthouse with a zoning question uh, or zoning issue, that I just go to the assessor's office. To me, that makes
I just hate it, just leave the courthouse and we, you know, hey, I have to call over to Carol and, you know, so we really drug our feet, you know.
Yeah.
So, we appreciate you bringing the numbers out, digging into it, the classes and.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not, not a problem. I don't know if this is, yeah, something you'd like to discuss more today or if you wanted to talk more outside of this.
Always open to suggestions.
Well, oh, you guys, but I, I mean, I think it makes sense what you're talking about, how to break it down so um, your staff that are involved get something, but yet you're the lead on it, so of course you'd get what, you know, did before and that'll make sense.
I'm sure Amy could differentiate right on the paycheck so they could see that. Hey, this is from the assessor's office. This is because I'm zoning, so it's not all.
Yeah, I believe there's two pages.
So you could see, or there's two pages, you separate pay. Um, okay, so it's separate.
Yeah, I'm open to however, it needs to be done. I know that the budget is different, so I know that sometimes those things have to work differently.
Well, if you gave us the green light, we could make a motion to appoint the new acting assessor.
Second.
Any further discussion?
We've discussed.
Thank you for bringing this up. Thank you for taking it.
I like seconded it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye. I want to thank Maddie.
Before we change our line.
Yes, thank you for stepping up.
I realize that it'll be extra, extra court time.
So do we, how do we want to do the, the pay thing then? So it gets, I think the way Maddie presented it was correct.
You two work that out, how it's best for your office and what's, works out in her, her table.
Yep, I will go talk to her about it.
Take the simple route.
Yeah.
Talk to Amy and you guys figure out how that's going to work for you guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
We want to revolution, establish a special revenue fund. Contract law.
Establish this fund. In the event that we do have contract law enforcement moving forward.
I mean, does it really matter, I guess, other than previously it just went into general fund. Is that right?
Yep.
This, if we establish a fund, it'll just go into this fund and uh.
Can be able to draw from it?
Draw from it to pay, pay for something specifically?
It has to be specific, but I've never heard what it is. We asked that question, I just don't, we have a fund, why are we getting a new fund?
They would still have to
I just don't understand.
Have spending authority through an approved budget.
Why can't it go on that line item that they already have?
If it goes to the general fund, then you have to have a budget amendment to move it to general fund to his fund.
Nope, there's a fund already for special things.
Oh, within his budget.
Within his budget, so I just.
The forfeiture fund.
There's a contracted law enforcement.
Yes.
You're right, I did see that.
Yes, and I brought it up last week and nobody, you know, just kind of, and I didn't didn't know why we, I asked last week, why would you get another one?
I do remember seeing that in the.
Do you remember me asking about it?
He was. I know he was.
Well, Terry suggested he get another one. I thank you. I, I did not understand what the difference was going to be between the two then. And I still don't understand what the difference is now.
So you drafted this, right? Did you draft this?
No.
Oh, I thought that's why you're here. Contract law, so, so there's one here. And there, we have all these. So what's, what's going to pass through that that's different than any of these other? But we've never heard what that purpose is. God bless you.
Seems like there was a reason that Roger wanted it that way. I can't remember.
Hey, do you still bounce around courthouse?
Remember talking about it?
We are going over here, contract law enforcement, special revenue fund. Help me, you okay? I'm a judge speaker. Okay, you want to speak, or? Gene had a question as far as.
I remember last week, I, I, I wondered why we were starting a different one, what, what the specific purpose of it was. And I don't believe we got it nailed down and nobody can remember uh, what we're going to do with that fund.
Well, I think, so the, the account you're talking about, I think is in the revenue fund, right? I don't think there's anything under expenditure for contract law enforcement. And the way Terry was making it sound with that money going over that maybe you don't have to do anything with the taxation. I think that's kind of the reason why we're looking at it.
So, so Roger, what you're saying, our, our old fund was just a revenue fund and a new fund would be a revenue and an expenditure fund? So you could bring money in and spend money out of there. Versus the old one, we could just bring money in and then to spend it, we'd have to do a budget amendment or.
Well, it just went into the general fund.
It just went into the general fund.
Yeah.
So.
Well, what would you?
So last time we talked about it, um, was that obviously there wouldn't be any extra taxes.
Right, what would you foresee spending money out of this fund for?
Uh, just operations, equipment, um, basically the same stuff that, that we do now. But I think it would just help with the taxation is what my understanding was as well from what Terry was talking about.
Cause we could spend money directly out of this fund versus having to levy to give him the spending authority.
And where's this extra money coming from?
The contracts with the southern cities.
Okay, so we have a line, we have a revenue.
Gene's concern is we got line operating grants, contributions. Fund zero, 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 one, dash, two, dash, zero, five, dash, one thousand, dash, two, five, zero, one thousand, contract law enforcement.
Yeah.
Under revenues, so do we, do we need to create another
That's.
Contract law enforcement fund under revenue? Or do we just need to create an expenditure fund? We already got the revenue side covered.
Yeah, so it seems to me like we're, you got so many columns already, why create another one?
That's what her question is.
Thank you, Kyle.
I mean, if a little bit confused, but I guess, when you create a fund, you have to create both a revenue fund and an expenditure fund? They don't just, creating a fund just doesn't produce revenue and expenditure at the same time, evidently.
That's why I asked the question. If I knew the answer, I wouldn't keep asking you.
Okay.
Doing, I was just wondering what we need to do.
Right.
Doing something twice that would don't need to be done twice.
I got plenty of line items to look at. I don't need another one.
We're just trying to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's, Roger.
So. So the money.
It helps with taxation as well.
Yeah, well, but the money that you gather from these contract law enforcement, which you have budgeted at, it was eighty and then we took it down to fifty-five. You want to be able to take that money and use for your what did, what did we use this money for before? Or how did we get it out of there before?
We didn't, just went into the general fund. So that was just part of the budget.
So then we had to levy for more just to cover the other stuff because we, you know.
And that's the benefit of having the expenditure fund, so that you can just spend that money without having to levy the taxes.
Right.
To have the authority to spend it. So I can see Roger's point is that, hey, this will not necessarily decrease, but not, we won't have to levy for us to spend that amount of money.
Right.
We can spend.
It's not a I mean, it's not a big issue right now. It's, we're talking small, small dollars. But if we were to get into a major contract, say in millions of dollars.
Right, therefore that would be beneficial.
Right, beneficial.
What are we going to call this line item?
I mean, we could call it whatever that, we just need to create.
We need to.
Just create an expenditure. Understood. And so do we do that by resolution? Do we do that by? I mean, because this is, what we, what we have is the resolution to create a new fund.
That's why, but it.
But do we need a resolution just to create an expenditure fund of the fund we already have in place?
Cause it seems like we already have one that's not.
Whoa, we have the county attorney here.
It's not working the way we.
That's a theory question. I mean, I can go dig into it. I don't have an answer right now.
Right.
Well.
Roger, let me ask you, the resolution that we had in front of us today, did you create that with Terry?
That's all we talked about, Terry, I guess.
You see all these numbers going inside each other here, so I'm wondering if these revenue and expenditures are tied together.
So we could just postpone this to next week. Or we can move forward, Terry's busy. I mean, it's not a huge pressing thing that needs to be done with any.
That's the other prosecution.
Right.
We need it for the budget.
I need it for the budget.
So I have to get it in for next year's budget, which we have to have stuff out the door for that letter this week.
So it is more pressing than what I thought.
There we go.
Thank you for coming in.
So it says depositing revenues and paying expenditures. So we are technically by this resolution creating both of them.
Right.
Yes, it's one, it's one new fund and then it'll have new revenue and expenditure and line items.
Let's not beat it to death.
Yeah.
Seems like we have our questions answered.
No.
Alright.
Thanks, Roger.
Thanks, Roger. Alright, after I read it, it made sense because we are.
Do you have likely to read it?
Sure.
Resolution establishing special revenue fund, the number zero, zero, four, nine, contract law enforcement. And whereas Crawford County has determined the need to establish a special revenue fund for accounting purposes and for the purpose of depositing revenues and paying expenditures for contract law enforcement. Therefore, be it resolved that the contract law enforcement fund, special revenue fund number zero, zero, four, nine, be, and is hereby established as of March fourth, twenty twenty five. Be it further resolved that the interest shall accrue, accrue to said fund as is normally allocated and disputed by Crawford County Treasurer dated this day of March twenty.
Alright. Resolution, right? Actually, I have a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Craig, it is a resolution. All in favor, say aye, Kyle.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Gene?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Alright. That's easy.
The next one. Resolution twenty twenty-five, establish special revenue fund, zero, zero, four, eight, prosecution costs. Now, is this yours?
This is mine. So there's a, I, provision in the Iowa code that allows uh, my office to recoup some costs of prosecution. Uh, the trick is you have to have a, a budget line for it. Uh, I've been talking to other county attorneys who utilize Iowa Code Section eight fifteen, point thirteen. It essentially requires the county to pay for certain things of a prosecution. Depositions, transcripts, just things that are kind of routine business and prosecuting case. Then those are paid upfront by my office, by my, my budget. This provision also allows us to recoup some of those costs upon successful conviction or guilt plea. And so the way I understand it is these counties who have this revenue line don't get a lot of money flowing in and out of it because it depends on defendants paying, which, kind of a lot. But, and the chance that they do pay, it's gotta, it's gotta go somewhere. And so this is where I want to go.
So have they never paid in the past or you've never pursued that? Did the Iowa law recently change?
Uh, no, I think it's been around. It's just our office has never had the line.
Kind of like the jail charging the clients for being in the jail. And they don't work and once they're released, they, 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 they did never pay, that thing. Right, won't be a lot of funds, I would guess.
I doubt it won't get a lot, but.
But if there is, we should have a fun, put it in.
And then.
I make a motion to approve this resolution.
But then does he need one to take it out, spend it for his?
It's the same language.
You made motion? And then just, so for, for further discussion, this gives you another tool in your toolbox.
Yes, and I mean, I could use it clean and both gate, right, yeah. Or otherwise just recoup some costs of, of prosecution.
I hope you do.
I hope.
Any, any further discussion? It is a resolution, so I'm ready to say aye, Kyle.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Aye.
First, your goal is three billion.
Not very tall, the whole.
For the fun of it.
Well, thanks for bringing that to us.
Alright, go for it and make some money.
Safety council training, closing for the house, March nineteenth.
This is also mine.
Oh.
So we have the Health and Safety Council, uh, with department heads, um, or designees. So we've been talking about for some time, um, doing an active shooter training. And this first came up under the previous sheriff's administration, and there is a kit um, that they have, I think they have it. It, like smoke machine, speaker, uh, try to recreate some of the what might happen in an active shooter, the sounds, the smells, the visuals. And the idea is to have a practice. And then so we all agreed in the Health and Safety Council, we should, we should drill this. Um, but then it became, when, when. Um, but then it became when, when are we gonna, when can we do it? Are we gonna do it before? I mean, we, we want about two and a half, three hours for the training, so can't really do it before work. Are we gonna expect our employees to stay after work? Are we gonna ask people to come in on the weekends? And if so, what's attendance gonna be like? And then we came up with the idea of what if we ask the board? As the keepers of the hours of the courthouse to give an afternoon, uh, we're imagining two to four thirty. Uh, after the courthouse closed. And then do the drill then. Uh, that would, some bonuses would be we don't have to pay any comp, PTO overtime because it's during regular work hour. Of course, the downside is the courthouse is closed for this. Now, I believe the date that we have, then when I sent it over was for March nineteenth. I was talking to Roger about this. He wants to reschedule because he's gonna coordinate with the state patrol, handling services and other agencies to be a part of this as well. And so he's thinking July sixteenth now.
Oh.
Would be the date to do this, same time, two to four thirty. Um, I think it's a Wednesday or Thursday.
Um, it's a Wednesday.
Okay. And so, yeah, the idea would be to come here and ask that the board um, close the courthouse to the public. And to allow for this training on that day.
I mean, that's, I don't have a problem with that. I, I like that it's now July.
Yeah, more time.
March to give more time to notify the public that it's gonna be closed. Um, but you said the ambulance would be, would be involved with the fire department?
I think so. I mean, Roger's coordinating.
Zach, is, is Zach gonna be?
Zach is part of this, yep.
I like that you're bringing in everybody. That's not just.
It would be multiple agency response, so.
Yep.
Right, that's the, that's the.
What's, there, you said you hire a special team or crew to come in and do this?
No, no, well, I don't, that part, I think it's all machine. I don't know if we have like a, like a, a bad guy or a set of bad guys running around in masks. I know that all we've talked about is like the smoke machine, the sound machine, um, and kind of that part of the drill. I, I saw, I mean, I was different, I mean, Roger's kind of put it all together, so I don't know. I guess that's just a part of it.
Okay.
You need a bad guy on. Wouldn't translate.
So the Crawford County Health and Safety Council consists of?
Department heads.
Just department heads at the courthouse.
And Zach.
And Zach, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea and it's.
I do too.
Something that, you know, you can always think, oh, we can't hit here. But yeah, it is very close home with incidences in Iowa.
I like it that it's July, so there's plenty of notice that we don't just, you know.
Yeah. No, I mean, that's one of the reasons that we went and hired Zach and hired a full-time person is that we felt that maybe our county was underprepared. For instances um, of disaster, and this is the specific one.
Yes.
And um. It's important that we know what to do, but be it, we'd be talking to the courthouse, but if you had school individuals involved also, maybe. We need to have the superintendent here or, you know, from other schools to say, hey, here's what would happen at courthouse. How do you wanna, you know, use this at your school?
Yeah.
Is on our agenda as discussion, take action. Um, for closing the courthouse from two to four thirty with the change of, the date wouldn't, to me, it doesn't.
Yeah, it's not a material change. I mean, I think it's getting even more notice to bump it down the road, so I don't think we have to reset it.
Or even have to have a date in the motion.
I suppose not, yeah. There's always been notices. I mean, the board would have to approve the closure of the courthouse.
That we give the Crawford County Health or what Health and Safety Council, the authority, if you want to say, or the ability to close the courthouse, whatever they have their training.
We want, so there's plenty of.
And we'll get plenty of notice posted.
Notice posted.
Put on the portal, put on the website.
That would be a motion.
A second.
I'll let Megan catch up with you.
There's one concern. This board have never, again, I heard that. Have the authority to close this courthouse.
Never had.
I don't want to hear, I don't want to have it be turned into that, well, I'm on vacation that day. I want my damn day back. I want my two hours back. I want department heads to use this, this is not, I don't want this to be a crutch that we have to have a. Cause.
Well, if anything.
Cause that's what happened right, it happened before, previous boards have experienced that. So that's why this board has taken the stance that we don't close this.
Yeah, which is unfortunate.
I agree with that point. I would hope that participation that people wouldn't wanna be involved, that they're not, that hopefully they can. Schedule around this so they're not gone.
It will happen.
But, but do.
Right, somebody's got a pre-planned vacation for July sixteenth.
And we talked about that. July is a hot month for most departments to go to like annual trainings. Like I know I'm at a training the week before. I think Sherry's at a train the week after. So we were pretty mindful of the thick day. Where we'd be full force. And if that subject to change, then.
You had to work it out.
We work it out.
Work it out, department heads.
But what, what you're saying, Kyle, is what happens is if I'm on vacation that day. And they have training.
Or if you sit.
So the, the, the employee would come back and say, I want to be paid for those two and a half hours on top of my vacation.
Sorry.
Right?
Make that very.
I'm gonna say, sorry, you're on vacation.
Or if they, if they're sick that day.
But, but this is not, this is not extra time. This is time that employees would be here.
Right.
You're not just letting them go home. No, you know, they're here doing a training.
Yes, this will be a mandatory training.
But do you understand what the, the problem is that they were sick that day and that it was closed? They would want that time back because.
Oh, I see.
You know, and that's what, that's why we never even closed it for bad weather.
Yeah.
Because.
So, so if someone, let's say someone is sick that day.
Yep.
I would envision them, I mean, the courthouse is closed, but the departments aren't closed.
Yeah.
And so. It's just closed to the public, not closed altogether.
Just as long as that's clear.
And so I would expect that they would not have, if they would take a full, if they had to take sick day, it'd be for the full day, not minus the two and a half hours.
Cause you're not.
Because their department's still open.
Okay, just.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm mindful.
Learning from experience, we're trying to avoid.
Good to just have that in the open so we all understand and on the same page.
Right, right.
Any further discussion?
No, I'm glad we brought that all up, so there's no misunderstanding.
On all favors, say aye.
Aye.
Chair goes aye. Okay, we can move on.
And I will take care of the postings and the notice, all right?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Colin. I hope it's good training.
You need some bad guys to be actors. I got a couple.
You know, few, all right.
Oh, now you're including them too?
Well, I hate.
She's showing us all over the world. First it was just you. I was in favor of that.
Right. Who knows how many bad people they need.
Okay, we'll move on to discuss take action proposal for trial IT support service for Crawford County courthouse network from ACS. We have Corey here, so I mean, seems.
Well, we had this last week. Corey brought that. We just didn't have it on the agenda.
Right, so we brought it up to approve today. Layered out.
How are things working out, Corey?
They're pretty good. Dalton, bro.
All right, Dalton. Everything going okay?
I agree with that. You know. Uh, I mean, you guys do have issues that, that do require, I would say, advanced IT support. Um, I've put out a lot of those fires for you.
Thank you.
And fix some of those issues permanently. That's what I'm trying to do. But I see a lot of projects coming down the road that you need advanced support. I mean, if I wasn't here, like when you had moved your veterans to Paris, for instance, like. Uh, you wouldn't have anybody set your firewall and all that stuff. And that needs to fire some days in Rocky certified, so. Um, I dropped that down. I mean, if you had your VA, I'll be up and going now. Um, but you know, you can add public health and mixed suit as well, so.
Very simple.
Another undertaking that you want an IT director or someone to pull over, so.
So Dalton, the issues that you see and your past working with Corey, do you. Perceive that he can fill those needs on a, on a lot of those, or is this still gonna require you to do?
Um, I also don't know the depth for his company well enough to tell you and know who he has, so. I don't know. Maybe there's gonna be some times that we got that at all, no matter what. He just, his knowledge behind the county and county structure, I should say. But obviously Cisco's, he got a huge Cisco advantage up in here, though I'm not Cisco certified, I mean. So, oh yeah, I mean, he's always vocal, I guess.
So, and Corey, do you see when he says that there's things moving forward that we're gonna require IT support, you know what those things are?
There's that conversation with Terry yesterday about this.
Okay.
There's a lot of things that are not finished.
Okay. And you can finish them, then you know what they are.
Me, there's, yeah.
You know what they are.
Yeah, as long, as long as it's not sprung upon, it can all be hit.
Okay, all right.
How much notification would you need, you know, once uh, public health is ready to make that move over? How much?
I told Kit, well, we just have to plan in time, because I asked the same thing to Kit yesterday, like, will we move everything? Or are they physically grabbing an office and taking computers over? We'll be all, things like that, because that was the biggest question. I mean.
Yeah.
It's not like, hey, we're moving tomorrow, like that.
They got, they got more stuff.
Right, and she said to move in the double building right now, which I said, that's.
That, that doesn't affect any IT, so.
Right.
That's junk.
But I mean, otherwise, uh, we don't, I don't talk about this. We'll find, we'll maybe.
Okay, all right.
Well, Dalton, we appreciate you being there to try a kind of certification, but. I mean, and being able to have Corey, you call you, you know, one phone call away, like we said, and it helps us get through what we need to be.
Yep. You just have a lot going on right now.
Yeah, kind of having a worst time.
You know, all this flooring thing, we were all weekend, no wire, replacing everything, you know, and now you're gonna move the VA and public health, it's like. We just had to show up and maintain for a while, this could be scared. It's like, hell, this is happening, this is definitely.
This too shall pass.
Oh, yeah.
Behind us.
Right.
So. Well, we didn't have any problems with the agreement. I mean, we're all in favor of, we all knew that we need to find some interim IT. Individual or company and that Corey fills that role. So I will make the motion to approve uh, ACS as IT support services for Crawford County courthouse.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that all, baby, say aye.
Aye.
Chair goes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
All right.
Get to work.
Yeah.
See what we break. What's up?
Don't destroy it here. Look at the mess here.
We were better shape. Yeah, I, I see IT people, whatever. Present.
I think big picture wise, we were way better than we were six years ago.
Oh, yeah.
But the others bottom, things I probably.
They actually didn't.
What do we need to amend here?
Yes. Um, for what little I know is that the time you have during the board supervisor meeting. And with this budget uh, proposal, it has to either be be, before the board decides. Supervisor meeting, it can't be.
During earnings.
Yes.
So we can have that like at?
Eight forty-five. Or eight forty-five.
I remember that last year, yeah, we did, we added it at eight thirty, yep.
So it has to be, it can't be during.
Right, it has to be separate. That's right, that's right. That's Iowa, Iowa codes.
Let's do eight thirty.
Eight thirty.
Yeah, it's three thirty.
I'll make a motion that we amend.
Actually, do amend.
Maybe at eight forty.
Public hearing to.
Right.
Same date, but the time of eight thirty, yeah, please call me.
Second.
I will call you. Any further discussion? Housekeeping, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Chair goes aye.
Aye.
Aye is amended.
That's right.
We are up to citizens' input. We have, yeah.
Yeah, come on up. Yeah, give us that. So you're gonna give us that lot.
Yeah.
You're gonna give us that lot across, too. God brought the deed to sign it over to us today.
Thank you.
After all these years. Well.
This is what I got from the city on that lot across street, it would be called fifteen south twelve thirty, I cost it.
One down here.
Yeah, right there. And uh, I got a letter about sidewalks and some of the driveways, some of them have to be six inches thick and, and uh. I thought, well, maybe I could just sell you the lot, you know, instead of doing all this work, you know, but. Um, yeah, I got this sidewalk and driveways and six inches thick and forth. But uh, I was thinking that I could sell you the lot, maybe you could fix it yourself or something. And uh, for thirty thousand dollars. And uh, I'd get about forty-five thousand that if I fix it for them. And in the meantime, I think if I extend that money for sidewalks, I'm gonna have to have about three hundred and fifty dollar rent, not a hundred and seventy-five.
All right.
So we're talking the lot straight south?
On the corner.
Just like, yeah.
The parking, the, where they, where we park our vehicles?
Yeah.
It's right up front here.
Yeah. Yeah. Fifteen south fifteen.
It's a vacant, it's a vacant lot. That's mostly concrete?
Yeah.
Currently?
Not all concrete.
Or is it?
It's kind of gravel.
Is it gravel?
It would be nice to have.
No, there's part of where the, there used to be a gas station there, that's.
That's all cleaned out though, like the tanks and there's no.
Yeah, that's where the, that's where there isn't any sidewalks. That's where I had the tanks taken out.
And the tanks are gone?
Yeah.
So there's no requirements of anything like that, if you sell it, that we would have to have a DNR inspection or anything?
No, I don't think so. I got pictures, well, I didn't know the tanks were out. My dad might have taken them out when I was going to school or something. But uh, so I had that uh, botker dig down in there to take the tanks out. And there were no tanks there. It was Phil stand all the way in there. He did take out a bunch of big pipes like this that went over to the neighbor's lot, kind of. You know, I got pictures of that, all those pipes that he took out.
So is it currently used for employee parking?
Yeah, we pay rent or not to.
We pay him a hundred and fifty a month.
Hundred, hundred and seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
But I have to have a lot more back to do off the sidewalks, you know. Oh, I okayed with my nephew. My sister owns half of that too. I own a little remiss, I don't, you know.
Right, right.
And uh, but my sister's ninety-five, should be ninety-six in a couple months. And so I talked to Mike Remus, one of her sons.
And he was okay with that.
That was okay to sell for thirty thousand, yeah.
How did you come up with the dollar amount, Jim? How do I?
Well, I gave you guys a bid for twenty-eight fifty about five years ago. You know, and that, that, that's when I went to, I don't know, San Antonio, uh, Royal or something and had a couple of SMS and, you know, but. It's pretty, it's a pretty good sized lot. I think I seen, went to twelve cars there sometime.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't lose it. I mean, it's beneficial to our courthouse.
Mm-hmm. It makes sense for us to own it to make it long-term. We're always gonna have employees and we're always gonna have, nice to have employees parked there so that public connects us the front of the courthouse.
Right.
Not sure that's the reason why we, we do that, so.
Right.
Yeah. Guys, I thought you were just gonna sign it over for us today, Jim.
How many, how many years have we been renting it?
Oh, long enough to pay for it.
Yeah.
You almost, you almost paid for it, I think.
That's the math I've.
I think I paid for it once already.
I think we have.
Subtracting about a brother who already paid it.
Oh, I, yeah, I, I, I remember when Jim offered it to us and that we had it in the budget, but then we were finalizing the budget and we didn't see. We thought it was gonna be more beneficial to the taxpayer just to continue to pay rent at that time. To kind of, to come up with the twenty-eight thousand.
And then we.[1670.71]
Well, that was all right, but if I have to pay for all the sidewalks, you know.
Right.
I know there's one driveway, it looks like it's okay, the city did, redid that when they did the street, but there's two driveways.
So you got a letter from the city?
Yeah, yeah.
So are those improvements that we'll have to make if the county owns it also? So well, that'll be a cost of us in addition to.
Absolutely, yeah.
And what did you estimate those expenses to be that you'd have to pay?
Well, I think it could be as high as fifteen thousand.
High as fifteen thousand?
Which we think hopefully maybe we would be able to get secondary roads or come in there and do a lot of the work.
Maybe we should add secondary roads, where we, but either way, I think it would be beneficial longer.
We're like saying we already paid for it once, why not? We're gonna need it for years to come.
Right. They got.
Then we can put it in next year's budget. I mean, we're in budgeting process. Scheduling the hearing. Or we could stick it in twenty twenty six budget, seemed like a good timing.
Just in. Let's go around the agenda, um. I have motion down.
Yeah, we can't make a decision today.
Yeah, yeah. Another thing, another reason I'm trying, trying to move it to is because my sister will be ninety six pretty soon. And if she dies, then it kinda will go into a state fund with her part, maybe, you know.
Complicate things.
It, it, it does, yeah.
It's a more complicated, so.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll.
Unless she's giving the lot to you.
Yeah.
Or maybe she's giving it to the courthouse, to the county.
So, so I have forty five days to notice by then. But.
The date of that letter?
Yeah.
So by, I think that letter is dated February fourth, so that would be like March.
The letters from the city?
Yeah.
That's what you're looking at?
And you have forty five days, so forty five days from February fourth. No.
Oh.
You have to have it completed by October first, but you have to respond to the city by like March twenty second or something like that.
What do you say when you respond to the city? I'm gonna do it or I'm not gonna?
You have to tell them, either you're going to do it, they can find somebody.
Did you?
How are you planning on wanting to do it? Um, yeah.
What if you don't wanna do it?
Well, then they will, then, then you have to request that the city gets the work done for you.
Right.
Yeah, right.
And if the city can do it, certainly the county can do it.
Right.
Yeah, that would take maybe, the family can do it.
Yeah, yeah, we can. Yeah.
All right.
We'll have it on next week's agenda and. Okay.
Yeah, cause he has to respond by, I think.
Right, at least he could respond that he's selling it to the.
Yes.
If we decide selling it to the county um, by, I guess, July first, probably when it could happen.